Well, good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our September 8th, 2025 City Council Meeting Order. We welcome all of you who are joining us in the audience, those who may be joining us virtually. We welcome you as well. At this time, as with any meeting, we start with the invocation. We ask that Pastor Richard Sanders, TruVine Ministries, if he would please come to the podium. And I ask that all would please stand for the prayer immediately following. If we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance in unison.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we've come before you tonight with hearts full of gratitude for the opportunity to serve this city and its people. Thank you for the gift of leadership and the responsibility that you've entrusted to this council. Lord, we ask for your wisdom to guide every decision made in this room. Let clarity replace confusion, unity overcome division, and purpose drive every conversation. May we not seek what is just good, but what is in the best interest for the people of Fayetteville. Bless this city, its leaders, and its citizens. Protect our community, provide for those that are in need, and let your peace rest upon us. In your name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Sanders. We're very familiar with TruVine and Pastor Jones. We thank you for coming tonight to give us the prayer. You want to tell us a little bit about TruVine and the ministry or yourself and the church?
Well, yes. So, TruVine is doing everything that TruVine is able to do. As for myself, we just recently launched Echo Church, which I'm now the pastor of.
Congratulations.
Here in the city.
Where are you located?
So, we meet every Sunday morning at 10:10 at the Omni Theater, which is the old Dollar Theater, but we're in there in the theaters on every Sunday. So, we've been doing a lot of different things in the city. From our bookbag drive today, we just launched our Her Essentials campaign, which allows us to collect items for feminine hygiene products for all the ladies that are in need at this present time.
Well, I appreciate it, Pastor. I'm sorry, they had TruVine in my notes.
No, it's fine. Yes, I was there. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. But thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you for the prayer. Let's give him a round of applause, please. At this time, we will have an announcement for Aviation Career Education Academy. We asked that Mr. Andrew Legala would come forth and tell us about the great things we're doing at the Fayetteville.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Calvin and Fayetteville, North Carolina's distinguished City Council members. Thank you for having us here today. So, during August 4th and 5th this year, Fayetteville Regional Airport hosted its fourth annual Aviation Career Education Academy. With the fiscal support of the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Division of Aviation Airport staff, along with several industry partners, a two-day program was planned and organized to introduce the many career paths in the aerospace workforce to the youth of our community. We accepted 35 students in the academy, all of which participated in an end-of-academy survey. The survey results confirmed that the ACE Academy sparked an overwhelming interest in the aeronautical field amongst the participants. The initial North Carolina Department of Transportation ACE Academy grant was accepted by City Council in 2022. Since then, the academy has expanded to reach the interest in Cumberland County. Today, we're honored to have three of our ACE Academy students here with us to share their experience. So, without further ado, I'd like to personally introduce them to you. Elena Fillmore, 11th grade, she's homeschooled. Adrielle Torres, 10th grade, Westover High School, and Derek Zieg, 7th grade, Grace Creek Middle School.
Good evening. I am Elena Fillmore. First, I want to say how thankful I am that I had the privilege to attend the ACE Academy this year. I truly valued the learning opportunities I had, and the staff was all very welcoming to me. Having activities outside of the classroom, like going on flights, touring the air traffic control tower, and touring the airport itself, allowed for engagement outside of classroom instruction. Personally, I enjoyed Dr. Casey Denham's presentation about NASA. This opened my eyes to NASA's focus being not only on space, but aeronautics as a whole. Overall, I believe the experience was very valuable, and I'm very glad I had the opportunity to attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adrielle Torres. I am really excited to be here today. I want to share my experience with you guys. It was my first time joining something really special that could help my future and learn a lot about aviation. And it influenced me a lot, this academy, influenced me a lot to join the Air Force when I grow up and provide money for my family, too. And I hope to, one day, to become, again, a fighter pilot for this country. Sorry, I'm nervous.
You're doing good, man.
Yeah. This ACE Academy is the best thing that ever happened to me in my life, and it really helped me a lot with what to decide to do in my future. I struggled a lot, and now I know what to do in my future.
Thank you, man.
Hello, I am Derek Zieg. I am 7th grader at Grace Creek Middle School, and I attended the ACE Academy program in It was very fun and educational. Some of my favorite programs there was the NASA Engineer. I learned a lot about aeronautics and space and technology they're working on. I also enjoyed the flights that they let us go on. It was, but overall, just the experience and getting to see the behind-the-scenes of the airport and how it works was amazing. I very much appreciated to come out here and speak with you guys. Thank you.
Yeah. Good job.
Yeah, very good job.
All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. All right. Yeah. Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Legala. Thank you to all of our future leaders, fighter pilots, aviation professionals. Thank you so much. We're very encouraged by what we heard today, and keep up the good work. We'll be pulling for you. Also, at this time, I would like to pause for a moment, recognize District Court Judge Sherri Sala Mack, who's here with us, and she has, let's give her a round of applause, Judge Mack. She has some special guests as well that we would like to have a word from. I'll put her on the spot. She has no problem stepping up to her.
Good afternoon to all of you from City Council. I have the opportunity to have two of my very top students from Fayetteville State University. They are criminal law students that are aspiring to hopefully go to law school. And as I always say, they can read, obviously, because they have made it to college, but I always like to do hands-on and important things that they see outside of the classroom. So, tonight, we have the privilege to come and observe a City Council meeting. So, I have Grace and Jayla, one from Nashville, Tennessee, and one from Charlotte, North Carolina. So, we are here observing a City Council meeting, and thank you all for allowing us to be here tonight.
Thank you. Well, welcome you all. Welcome from Nashville and Charlotte. All right, welcome to Fayetteville. All right, at this time, we will present a proclamation in memory of 9/11, a very special day in our nation. So, I would ask that members of the Police and Fire Department, if you could please meet me at the podium.
Whereas the city of Fayetteville and its citizens of our great city, join with our fellow Americans across the nation in honoring and remembering those who lost their lives that terrible morning, September 11th, 2001. And whereas we continue to offer support to the families and friends who lost their loved ones in that devastating events of this day, and especially our firefighters, police, first responders, who continue to step forward and serve our communities with dedication and vigilance. Whereas in the years since September 11th, 2001, hundreds of thousands of American troops have served and sacrificed around the world to protect the American people. And whereas in honor of all the lives we lost nearly 24 years ago, and in honor of all the heroes who have given their whole souls to the cause of this nation every moment since, may today not only be observed with solemn remembrance, but also with renewal and resolve. Now, therefore, I Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the City Council and our 208,000 residents, do hereby honorably proclaim September 11th, 2025, National Day of Remembrance. In witness thereof, I hereon do set my hand of the cause of the great seal of the city of Fayetteville to be affixed this 8th day of September, 2025. Mayor Mitch Colvin.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Chief Dove, Chief Bryant, and all of our first responders and those brave men and women who sacrifice so much every day, and to all the families who lost loved ones and gave the ultimate sacrifice on 9/11. We thank you for it, and we will forever remember. At this time, if there are no further announcements, I'll see Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you're ready for manager's updates.
Yes.
Okay. We have three items I'd like to bring to council and the community's attention. One is we have our second dug-in-a-district, which will be held on Tuesday, September 16th, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. It is a drop-in at any time during this event. It will be held at Harvest Family Church, which is at 6575 Fisher Road in District 6. The first dug-in-a-district that we held created an opportunity for residents to come in and engage with me, senior staff, as well as some council members who were there as well, on topics of interest of those citizens. So, we, last time, we talked about roads, we talked about streets, we talked about city projects, and I look forward to another engaging opportunity next week on Tuesday, September 16th, for another dug-in-a-district. Also very exciting, later this week, on Wednesday, September 10th, at 10:00 AM, we'll be doing the monument unveiling for Hurley Plaza, which is across the street. This has been a long time in coming, but I can't think of a more worthy person to nominate as an honor for Hurley Plaza than Mayor Hurley. He's given so much to the city and this community and to our state, as a matter of fact. Again, that will be Wednesday, September 10th, at 10:00 AM, in front of Segway Stadium on Hay Street. Then the last one is that later this month, we have another Fayetteville Out Front, which is an opportunity for staff, including senior staff, to reach out to the community on topics of interest. And this next one will be September 25th, at 6:30 PM. We'll come up with a location. I don't think we have a location at the moment, do we? That will be announced, but it will be how you might be able to get a job with the city and do business with the city as well. As you see every week, we have a variety of career jobs open in the city of Fayetteville, local government, and we're looking for locals and people interested in taking some of those jobs. And among that and other topics, we'll be talking about that on September 25th at 6:30 PM. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Do have a couple of council member additional announcements. I'll go to Councilmember Davis, Banks, McGlaughlin, and Benevente.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to publicly thank the Decree Road Community Watch, who held a cleanup on this past Saturday. I was not able to make it due to some sickness, but they collected over 5.63 tons of trash on Decree Road. So, I just wanted to make that public announcement and thank the Community Watch leader, Ms. Tara Whitfield, for all the hard work you guys are doing on Decree Road. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for any small business owners. Our Economic Department and Community Development Department would like your input. We have a survey regarding small businesses to help with growth, and it's a needs assessment. So, please make sure you complete that survey, and it ends on October 3rd. So, please check out the city of Fayetteville website to go ahead and make sure you complete the survey. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Major Hewitt, did you already mention the fashion show at the Bill Crisp Senior Center?
I did not. Give me a few months, and I'll be able to participate as a senior, but I'd like to...
I'll just mention it then very quickly. The Bill Crisp Third Annual Fashion Show will be happening on this coming Friday at 4:00 PM at the Bill Crisp Senior Center. So, for any folks that might be interested, that's 7560 South Rayford Road, again at 4:00 PM. Also, you know, and Mr. Mayor cut my mic off if this is not okay, but the Fayetteville State University is hosting a mayor's debate on Sunday at 2:00 PM. It's hosted by both the Cumberland County Democrats and the Cumberland County Republicans. So, for folks that are interested, September 14th is this coming Sunday at 2:00 PM at the JWC Brook Auditorium, 1200 Murchison Road.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. All right, council, seeing no further announcements, I move to 6.0 as the approval of the gin, if we can use our sure systems. Is there a motion?
No.
All right, motion by Councilmember Hair, seconded by Mayor Protem. Discussion on said motion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes to approve the gin. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries unanimous. Moving to 7.0 is the public forum. Per the City Council Policy 120.9, this is a time that residents may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Public forum will last no longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes each to address the City Council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. No time can or will be yielded to another speaker by another speaker. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the office of the city clerk no later than 5:00 o'clock today, on the day of the meeting. And when the city clerk calls your name, we ask you to please come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. When the light on the podium changes from green to yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. When the light changes to red, that means your time has expired. Any remaining speeches on the public forum list that did not get an opportunity to address the City Council will have the option to have their name placed at the beginning of the next scheduled public forums list, unless otherwise provisions are made by council. So, council, at this time, Madam Clerk, we have 27 speakers. We ask those in attendance just to hear as many or all, if we can, within a reasonable time parameter, but we ask that you would please be mindful of that, particularly if there are speakers following you that are speaking on the same topic. But with that, I'll call the first speaker, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our first speaker is Mr. Joseph Schwab.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Joseph Schwab. Imagine, it's 1963. You're standing at the reflecting pool outside the Lincoln Memorial in Washington, DC. You've just taken part in the march on Washington and listened to powerful speakers. The moment you've been waiting for finally arrives. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. steps up to the podium. He begins to speak, but you can't hear him because the police have cut off his microphone, and one of the greatest speeches in history is silence. Here in Fayetteville, there is an ordinance that bans amplified sound. This law prevents important messages from being spoken and heard. In June, it took a threat from the ACLU just to get the police to set aside this ordinance for the day. That should never be the case. Our representatives must respect the rights of Fayetteville's people when creating ordinances, and our police officers must know the law when enforcing it, so no one's rights are violated. I also want to briefly mention Shot Spider. Since it was up for renewal, cities such as Chicago, Atlanta, Portland, Oregon, Durham, Winston-Salem, and Charlotte have all chosen not to renew their contracts, stating that the return on investment was not high enough to justify the expense. Why should Fayetteville waste taxpayer funds on a program that all other major cities have already determined is not worth the money? Those funds could be put to better use to help our fellow Fayetteville citizens. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Jalissa Thomas.
Good evening, Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, councilmembers. So, I'm Jalissa Thomas, and I actually live in Rayford, but I decided to plant my business, D3 Delivery, here in Fayetteville. So, we're out here on Hay Street, and we're a moving company. But for us, moving is more than just boxes, and furniture is moving lives forward. And today, I have a crew, it's two guys, Dale and Donnell. They came to me with records, and most doors were closed to them, but at D3 Delivery, we open ours. And what I've seen is powerful, that when people are given a chance, they show up, they work hard, and they prove that their past does not define their future. And so, that's why we call ourselves a second-chance company, because every hire that we make helps reduce recidivism, and it keeps someone out of the system and in the community. It also keeps them on their path to recovery as well. And every paycheck that I'm able to help provide is a ripple in our community. So, it stabilizes a home, it fuels our local economy, and it rewrites the story. And so, I've spoken to the reentry council, and they, of course, can help supply me workers, and that's very important, but businesses like mine also need support on the other side of the equation, and that's with steady opportunities to sustain those jobs. So, we need help with contracts, visibility, and inclusion in the city's economic development program, so that we can keep hiring, training, and building. So, tonight, I'm asking the city to consider what incentives, partnerships, or opportunities can you create for second-chance businesses here in the community? And, how much time do I have? Okay. And so, with my minute left, I also want to announce a street cleanup that I am hosting on September 20th, from 10:00 to 12:00, on Cedar Creek, on Cedar Creek Road, because this month is recovery month. And like I said, part of my workforce population is people that are in recovery, and so I'm hosting a street cleanup and a resource rally, and I would like to invite everyone out as well.
Thank you. And Ms. Thomas, Ms. Thomas, make sure that you see one of our community development people. There are some programs that we have that currently address what you're speaking of. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Tawanda Peterson. Ms. Tawanda Peterson? Not present? Our next speaker is Ms. Stacy Graybill. Ms... There we go.
Good evening, Ms. Graybill.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Graybill. I live at 108B Gillespie Street. First, I want to sincerely thank you all for the work that you do to move Fayetteville forward, and a very sincere thank you to Councilman Davis for his counsel this past week on other downtown matters, and we are very proud to have you represent our district. My husband and I are proud to be both residents and business owners. We own Pan Restaurant on Hay Street, and we are opening a micro grocery store later this year, right around the corner. Every single day, residents and businesses downtown are forced to deal with music blasting from cars, people revving engines at all hours, and businesses that are allowed to play music as loud as they want. A few months ago, there was a drive-by shooting right outside my 11-year-old son's bedroom window, right outside a business that never seems to face any consequences for repeated fighting, public drug use, public smoking weed directly under our windows, which wafts directly into my son's bedroom, drinking out of open containers in their vehicles, explicit inappropriate behavior, and noise violations every single night. On top of that, vehicles are constantly revving and speeding up and down the streets surrounding the market house, adding to the chaos and danger. This is more than just a nuisance. It is making downtown unlivable. This constant disruption has deeply affected our quality of life. My family has not had a full night's of sleep in six months since we moved downtown. Every single resident, employee, and business owner that we have spoken to about this issue feels the exact same way that we do. The negative sentiment that downtown gets from the rest of the city is unfortunately warranted, and the number of people who know desire to come down here hurts all of us. Our downtown should be booming and vibrant, not the place you avoid, and don't get me started on paid parking downtown. The heart of our city is not Skybo Road or Ramsey Street, it's right here, and right now, the heart of our city is hurting. Councilmembers, I ask you to act, enforce the ordinances that are already in place, consistently and fully, and take measures to ensure the quality of life and the peaceful enjoyment of our residents and workplaces is protected. Give our law enforcement clear direction and the tools to hold people accountable. Show us, the people who live, work, and invest here, that you are committed to making downtown safe, fair, and livable. Because here's the truth, if we can't get control of the very heart of our city, our historic downtown district, where City Hall, the Sheriff's Office, the Police Department sit, then how can we hope to create a vibrant, energized environment for growth? Our downtown district should be the shining light of what's possible in our city. This is America's can-do city, right? So, let's do better.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. David Zeitz.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Again, David Zeitz, 2412 Rayford Road. Good evening, Mayor Colvin, members of council, and fellow citizens. My name is David Zeitz, and I have the honor of serving as president of Longleaf Pond Realtors. I'm here tonight to speak... But businesses like mine also need support on the other side of the equation, and that's with steady opportunities to sustain those jobs. So we need help with contracts, visibility, and inclusion in the city's economic development program so that we can keep hiring, training, and building. So tonight, I'm asking the city to consider what incentives, partnerships, or opportunities can you create for second chance businesses here in the community? And how much time do I have? Okay, and so with my minute left, I also want to announce a street cleanup that I am hosting on September twentieth from ten to twelve in Cedar Creek, on Cedar Creek Road, because this month is recovery month. And like I said, part of my workforce population is to, is people that are in recovery, and so I'm hosting a street cleanup and a resource rally, and I would like to invite everyone out as well.
Thank you. And Ms. Thomas, Ms. Thomas, make sure that you see one of our community development people. There are some programs that we have that currently address what you're speaking of. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Tawanda Peterson. Ms. Tawanda Peterson, not present. Our next speaker is Ms. Stacy Graybill. Ms...
Good evening, Ms. Graybill.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Graybill. I live at one oh eight B Gillespie Street. First, I want to sincerely thank you all for the work that you do to move Fayetteville forward, and a very sincere thank you to Councilman Davis for his counsel this past week on other downtown matters, and we are very proud to have you represent our district. My husband and I are proud to be both residents and business owners. We own Pan Restaurant on Hay Street, and we are opening a micro grocery store later this year right around the corner. Every single day, residents and businesses downtown are forced to deal with music blasting from cars, people revving engines at all hours, and businesses that are allowed to play music as loud as they want. A few months ago, there was a drive-by shooting right outside my eleven-year-old son's bedroom window, right outside a business that never seems to face any consequences for repeated fighting, public drug use, public smoking weed directly under our windows, which wafts directly into my son's bedroom, drinking out of open containers in their vehicles, explicit inappropriate behavior, and noise violations every single night. On top of that, vehicles are constantly revving and speeding up and down the streets surrounding the market house, adding to the chaos and danger. This is more than just a nuisance. It is making downtown unlivable. This constant disruption has deeply affected our quality of life. My family has not had a full night's of sleep in six months since we moved downtown. Every single resident, employee, and business owner that we have spoken to about this issue feels the exact same way that we do. The negative sentiment that downtown gets from the rest of the city is unfortunately warranted, and the number of people who know desire to come down here hurts all of us. Our downtown should be booming and vibrant, not the place you avoid, and don't get me started on paid parking downtown. The heart of our city is not Skybow Road or Ramsey Street, it's right here. And right now, the heart of our city is hurting. Council members, I ask you to act, enforce the ordinances that are already in place consistently and fully, and take measures to ensure the quality of life and the peaceful enjoyment of our residents and workplaces is protected. Give our law enforcement clear direction and the tools to hold people accountable. Show us, the people who live, work, and invest here, that you are committed to making downtown safe, fair, and livable. Because here's the truth, if we can't get control of the very heart of our city, our historic downtown district, where City Hall, the Sheriff's Office, the Police Department sit, then how can we hope to create a vibrant, energized environment for growth? Our downtown district should be the shining light of what's possible in our city. This is America's can-do city, right? So let's do better.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. David Zeitz.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, again, David Zeitz, twenty-four twelve Rayford Road. Good evening, Mayor Colvin, members of council, and fellow citizens. My name is David Zeitz, and I have the honor of serving as president of Longleaf Pond Realtors. I'm here tonight to speak briefly about the virtues and values of Realtors in the Fayetteville community. First and foremost, Realtors are more than professionals engaged in buying and selling. We are community partners. In fact, so far alone in 2025, Longleaf Pond Realtors have invested over one million dollars in the Fayetteville State University, Fayetteville Technical Community College, and Methodist University and Cape Fear Valley Medical School. These investments demonstrate our commitment to education, health care, and opportunity right here at home. But our work goes beyond donations. Realtors often are the ones who personally conduct the city tours for prospective doctors, medical residents, many people coming into the community considering careers at either Cape Fear Valley, Methodist University, any of our several universities and schools. We help showcase Fayetteville as a welcoming place to live, work, and raise families, directing, directly supporting the recruitment of these very important professionals who come to care and invest in our community with their time and their talent. Today, fourteen hundred ninety-five Realtors work in Fayetteville, and one thousand one of us live here. We are your neighbors, we are your church members, your children's coaches. And because of the unique role we play, Realtors are often at the front lines of supporting those who serve our community. Over the past year, Realtors have assisted more than two thousand military families in Cumberland County, helping them put down roots in our community, often during moments of great transition and stress. We also serve as advocates for homeowners. When a proposed fifty percent increase in homeowners' insurance threatened family budgets, Realtors fought against it and helped stop it. We consistently oppose the real estate transfer taxes that are proposed at the state level, which remain an ongoing issue. And every year, we work tirelessly to keep flood insurance both affordable and available because protecting the dream of homeownership is central to what we do. Our work is not simply about transactions, it's about protecting families, strengthening neighborhoods, and ensuring Fayetteville remains a place of opportunity, stability, and growth. I would like to close with the following. It has come to our attention as an association for one of this body's most recent public forums that concerns were expressed regarding Realtors taking positions of public service in this community, specifically their motivations and authenticity in doing so. To me, this is no surprise, honestly. Our occupation involves the trust of and service to our clients from cradle to sail. From my perspective, who is better positioned to serve a constituency in public service and address the current kitchen table issues of families in Fayetteville than those who serve and are entrusted by families to find that kitchen in the house, in the neighborhood, in the city in the first place? Thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing Realtors to continue to be a vital part of Fayetteville's future.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Naomi Israel. Ms. Naomi Israel, not present. Our next speaker is Ms. Tiffany Jones.
Good evening, Ms. Jones.
Good evening, Mayor Colvin, council members, and citizens. My name is Tiffany Jones. I'm at two seven two one Thorn Grove Court, and I am serve as the vice president of the Community Outreach Committee with the Longleaf Pine Realtors Association. Realtors are often recognized for helping people buy and sell homes, but tonight, I want to show you the side that isn't always seen: neighbors, leaders, and volunteers committed to serving Fayetteville. Some may think otherwise, but our work in this community tells the true story of who we are. When families face food insecurity, Realtors are there. We partner with Alm's House, Fayetteville Urban Ministry, Friendship Garden, and Everybody Eats to make sure no neighbor goes hungry. When stable housing is out of reach, Realtors step in, supporting Habitat for Humanity and Fayetteville Urban Ministry so families and veterans can have a safe place to call home. Each year, we host a blood drive for Cape Fear Valley Hospital because giving life is part of giving back. Children are at the heart of what we do. We support, foster youth through Kids Peace and through our Teddy Bear Drive with Friends of the Children. Every pediatric patient at Cape Fear Valley receives support. Most recently, we partnered with Cape Fear Regional Theater to launch a literacy initiative that will send nearly fifteen thousand fifth-grade students in Cumberland County schools to see a live musical tied to their reading curriculum over the next three years. That's an investment in education that will outlast all of us. Our outreach extends further. We support the care clinic, providing free healthcare to those in need, and FTCC's Scholarship Foundation through their Bluegrass and Barbecue fundraiser. And every holiday season, Realtors lead the Marine Toys for Tots campaign. Last year, we served more than eleven thousand children, including over four hundred Fort Bragg families, all foster children in Cumberland County through social services, children from the Salvation Army Angel Tree Program, and pediatric patients at Cape Fear Valley. Only five years ago, that number was twenty-three hundred. The growth comes not from profit or policy, but from Realtors giving hundreds of volunteer hours, hosting collection boxes in their offices, donating personally, and showing up to ensure thousands of children have a joyful Christmas. This is who Realtors are. We are not here to manipulate or divide. We are here to serve, to lift up families, to support our youth, and stand with our veterans, and to invest in the future of Fayetteville. At this time, I'd like to ask my fellow Realtors and home builders who are here tonight to please stand. So you can see the people who give their time, their energy, and their hearts to this city. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Rudlin Brown. Ms. Rudlin Brown, not present. Our next speaker is Mr. Adam Furr.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Adam Furr. I'm the president of the Home Builders Association here in Fayetteville. I want to thank you for letting us speak tonight. Our goal is simple, is to highlight the value of new home construction in our city here at Fayetteville, not only in terms of housing, but also in tax revenue, jobs, and our growth. In the fiscal year 2024, new construction has generated nearly eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars in property tax revenue for the city. That's based on a sales volume of one hundred and forty-six million. In our fiscal year 2025, with our sales volume at one hundred and fifteen million, and the property tax rate has been reduced from fifty-seven dollars ninety-five cents to forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents, the city has collected just fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars. That's a drop of almost thirty-three thousand, or it could be thirty-nine percent in new revenue from construction in a single year. But housing goes far beyond tax revenue. Building just a hundred homes supports three hundred full-time jobs. Again, a hundred houses in our economy supports three hundred full-time jobs. These are not only construction crews, they're local suppliers, mortgage lenders, engineers, real estate professionals, insurance agents, and small businesses. They all benefit when we build homes. Here in Fayetteville, the Home Builders Association represents five hundred and twenty member companies, which together account for an estimated five thousand local jobs. Our industry here in Fayetteville brings five thousand local jobs. These are paychecks for families, supports for small business, and the backbone of our local economy. We understand that the council's decision to reduce the tax rate was intended to provide taxpayer relief along with builders and developers. At the time, the combination of a lower rate and reduced sales has significantly limited what new construction contributes back to the city. We urge you, as you plan for budgets, we encourage you to keep in mind how important new construction is to Fayetteville's financial health. Explore alternative revenue streams and support policies that encourage steady housing development. This could help offset revenue dips while ensuring the city grows responsibly. The housing industry remains one of the strongest engines for our Fayetteville's economy. We look forward to continuing to work with you to build homes, to strengthen our neighborhoods, and to grow our community together. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Robert Walls. Mr. Robert Walls, not present. Next speaker is Ms. Kristin Starks.
Good evening, ma'am. Mr. Walls? Yeah. If you could, let him...
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kristin Starks, and I'm a Fayetteville resident.
There you go.
Can you all hear me? Okay. Good evening, City Council. My name is Kristin Starks, and I'm a Fayetteville resident, a nurse, and a community organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm here today to call on the City Council to listen to the people of Fayetteville and cancel the city's ShotSpotter contract. The PSL has been going door to door and talking to hundreds of our neighbors for weeks now, including in the three ShotSpotter zones. We've talked to people about ShotSpotter, about the issues that they see in their community, and asked them what they think could make our city better. This has shown us that, one, the people of Fayetteville, including those being surveilled by this technology, do not support its continued use. And, two, the people of Fayetteville know what we need to make the city better. The overwhelming majority of people we have talked to agree that they haven't seen ShotSpotter bring about any real change, and they've expressed concerns about invasions of privacy and the harmful ramifications of sending the police into black and brown communities based on often inaccurate alerts. We would much rather the money being spent on this useless technology be invested in education, youth programs, childcare, living wage jobs, or even just improving the roads. These sentiments align with the abundance of research that shows us that at the root of crime and violence are poverty, inequality, lack of opportunity, and the desperation and hopelessness that come with them. Thus, real solutions for public safety meet people's needs so that they have no reason to turn to crime to survive. Real approaches to violence prevention address the material conditions and stressors that breed violence in the first place. We know what we need to stop crime. The problem is that the City Council isn't listening to us, nor have you listened to the data that has showed that ShotSpotter is ineffective, or to the focus group of Fayetteville residents that told you they would rather invest in their needs rather than, rather that you invest in their needs rather than surveil them. ShotSpotter is only one manifestation of a greater issue, the prioritization of policing, surveillance, and criminalization over meeting the needs of the people. Today, I and the people of Fayetteville, many of whom you see holding these signs behind me, call on you to act as the public servants that you claim to be and cancel ShotSpotter. Thank you.
Mr. Robert Walls.
Good evening, Mr. Walls.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Rob Walls, I'm in District Four. If your crime rates weren't so high, I might give an address, but I'm sure you'll work on that again and again and again. I'm here because transparency is horrible. I know where I was on September eleventh. I was doing joint operations overseas, or after that, in Afghanistan, defending our Constitution, the same one that all of you trample on. I put in multiple public records requests to look at crime data so that residents understand exactly what's happening in the city, stuff that you don't publish, stuff that you don't analyze and you don't talk about publicly. You know, the average response for that is over sixty days. So I put in a public records request to see how long it takes to get a public records request. You know what that average is? Eight days. Eight days. Something's not right here. Something's violating civil rights and arguably violating North Carolina statutes. But that's transparency, Fayetteville style. Same transparency that I fought for for over two and a half decades. That's appalling. All-American city, can-do city. What exactly are they supposed to mean anymore? Where's McNair? Twenty twenty-four, the Supreme Court ruled on social media on blocking people and closing discussions just because you don't like it. You violated that today. You violated the First Amendment rights of Americans.
Mr. Walls, let's keep it general, not specific.
Mayor Colvin, people in this room right here have violated First Amendment rights. That was addressed to the City Council back in 2024. Nothing's changed since then, and now you're taking arguably deliberate actions to stifle information for relevant concerns in this city. That's appalling. No one should support that. I've already contacted the North Carolina Legislature so I can speak directly to them so we can address the failures of this city to abide by its charter, North Carolina's Constitution, and our Constitution. I would say I really appreciate your time, but most of you are just going to try and flush this as soon as I leave. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Walls. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Elijah Whitmire Balthazar.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Elijah Whitmire Balthazar, and I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I'm a resident of Fayetteville. There is no price on a life saved. A sentiment meant to show that someone will take any course of action to protect others, but in a capitalist economy that puts profit over people, everything has a price. The price for Fayetteville's contract with ShotSpotter is two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. Two hundred and ten thousand taxpayer dollars are going to an AI surveillance system located solely in low-income, black and brown neighborhoods meant to detect gunshots and dispatch officers to the scene. ShotSpotter has only a twenty-three percent accuracy rate. The other seventy-seven percent of the time, loud noises such as fireworks, popped tires, slammed doors, and even broken glass have triggered the system to dispatch officers for gun violence that never happened. And of those twenty-three percent true positives, ninety-nine point five percent of them, someone had called nine-one-one anyway, making the entire system irrelevant. We know all of this because the city itself has partnered with Duke University to create these statistics. The decision to bring ShotSpotter to our communities was not a democratic one. Not a single person in the three neighborhoods affected by ShotSpotter were ever asked how they felt about it. Over two hundred people have signed our petition to end ShotSpotter. We know what makes our community safer. It's not more officers knocking on our doors, it's investment in our communities, the kinds of investments that help meet the needs of the working-class people. By now, it should be obvious that the working class is the only class with vested interest in meeting those needs. Imagine a better future where the working class could democratically control that two hundred and ten thousand dollar investment in surveillance. What would we do with it? We could bring down the cost of rent. We could bring down the price of groceries and the barriers to education and so much more. That's how we eliminate the conditions that make ordinary people so desperate that they resort to crime in the first place. That's a real solution to crime. Invest in the people, stop ShotSpotter.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Isaac Lacap.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. My name is Isaac Lacap. I live at three oh nine Sylvan Road in District Two. I will also be speaking about ShotSpotter, but I'm going to speak from a slightly different angle. I was at the City Council work session last Tuesday and wanted to speak about the discussion that happened there. For those who don't know, ShotSpotter, hold on, ShotSpotter is an acoustic gun detection surveillance technology that Fayetteville has implemented in three one-mile radius areas. On Tuesday, the City Council received a presentation from the Wilson Center for Science and Justice at Duke University, which analyzed the last eighteen months of data from the system. When Fayetteville City Council heard what many cities across the country have already, that evidence of ShotSpotter reducing gun violence is inconclusive, that it has little productivity in generating arrests, recovering guns, and discovering victims, and that the instances where it is marginally effective are a minority of situations, you might expect that they decided not to renew the expensive contract, which may come out of our tax dollars now that ARPA funds have run out. If not, you may have expected them to discuss implementation methods that would lead to improved data collection. This would not be an ideal response since these immense needs for additional information would most likely not make the system cost-effective, but would at least show that the City Council responds to expert opinions and reliable data, especially when it comes out of our tax dollars. Instead, the vast majority of City Council behaved as if they'd been personally insulted. They grilled the analysts on why their presentation didn't include victim stories, even though their presentation focused on broad statistical trends and despite the information being included elsewhere. They presented patently false, out of context, and irrelevant statistics about rising gun violence in cities that have removed ShotSpotter. They claimed ShotSpotter was wanted by the community, even though the vast majority of people in these zones have never heard of it. They blatantly admitted to supporting it because the military uses similar technology, essentially promoting police militarization. What these talking points demonstrate is an egregious misunderstanding of the role of data. Councilmember Davis best exemplified this when he accused the analysts of lacking transparency because he was given a whole bunch of cons that did not work, that the system did not work, and that they had to come up with pros on their own. But data are not pros and cons. Data is neutral, and pros and cons come from interpretation. In effect, City Council blamed analysts for their own negative interpretation of the data and decided to conjure their idea of positive data and its absence. The only data... The only data city council cares about then is whatever supports what they already believe, and they need to believe ShotSpotter works for their reputations. If a nuanced presentation seemingly contradicts the idea that city council is doing everything it can to reduce gun violence and acts in the best interest of affected communities, they will ignore, delegitimize, and reject any contrary perspective. That's because the city council is not interested in opening its mind and genuinely listening to our community. They continuously preach that you can't put a price on a life, but what is truly priceless to them is their power. They are not put off by the price tag because ShotSpotter is not something they purchase meant to purchase our safety, but our support, all while we foot the bill. We cannot continue to fall for their explicit self-advertising if we want a better Fayetteville. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Angela Freckleton. Ms. Angela, oh, there she is.
Good evening, Ms. Freck.
Good evening. Angela Freckleton, 5300 Brower Trail. On September 2nd, eight of you explicitly showed favor towards ShotSpotter with your votes, placing it on the consent agenda. You did this despite the inconclusive data, despite opposition towards the use of the tech itself. You claimed that it's for the people of Fayetteville, that continuing to utilize this tech is worth it so long as a life is saved. But Fayetteville was not listened to, and according to the evaluation of Fayetteville's ShotSpotter installation report from August, the likelihood of the tech saving lives on its own is low. City council is supposed to listen, to serve, but is that what happened? Is that what y'all did? The data that was presented at the work session last Thursday didn't even state that the technology was effective in relation to gun violence investigations. Okay, it showed that police arrive slightly quicker when something that might not even be a gunshot is heard by the AI. Great, what is the use of police arriving quickly to aid in the same problem over and over and over again? The root of the problem, the violence they are supposedly coming to solve, is not being stopped. There is simply not enough evidence to conclude that this technology makes our community safer. Can you guarantee that it will? Did the data say that it could? ShotSpotter is $220,500 for one year and $661,500 for three. We're rolling the dice and crossing our fingers, blindly allowing our hopes and good intentions to lead us into throwing money towards something that is not even guaranteed to work. Every vote for this tech was a blatant display of disregard for what was plainly presented in front of y'all. Fayetteville is being stabbed repeatedly by the assailant that is gun violence, and rather than throwing away the knives and apprehending the culprit altogether, our city leaders let us get hurt again and again and again, and then proceed to put a $220,500 Band-Aid on the bleeding gashes. Enough is enough. The goal should not be to have gun violence at all. You know what has been proven to effectively lower gun violence? Public safety solutions led by the community pouring money into resources that prevent rather than respond, not even giving the problem a chance to form, to grow, to spread. Pour resources into our schools, our faith-based communities, our medical providers, our community-based organizations. If we worked to make Fayetteville a place people could be proud of, a place people could thrive in, the results would ripple throughout every facet of our community, including our efforts to keep us safe from senseless violence. Could we not use the money going towards the undependable tech to strengthen Fayetteville's Office of Community Safety? Why not invest in bolstering awareness and engagement for this office, letting your citizens know it even exists, and actively encouraging them to fight for their right to a safer city? The people of this city deserve to be asked for what they want, listened to when they answer, and engaged with when decisions are being made. None of this happened with this decision, and look at where we are.
Madam.
Mayor, we have 2 minutes and 39 seconds left in the 30 minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
We have 12 speakers.
Let me briefly call the speakers and see who's here. All right. If you're here, and I call your name, please just stand so that I can know how many speakers we have left. Ms. Gwendolyn Fuller. Okay, Ms. Rhiana Gosby. Zakawana Semester. Benjamin Holquist. Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Kristi Guzman. Okay, just says Ms. Sarah. Ms. Cynthia Leaks. Okay, good to see you, Ms. Cynthia. Ms. Lizette, I see her. Mr. Sean McMillan, I think I saw him. Okay. Chaliko, I saw him. And Reed Corbett.
Mayor, we also have Sin Cedric Barham.
Cedric. Cedric who? Is it Addo?
No, he's number 16. You skipped him.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, so, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just moved that we extend the public forum period for a total of 15 minutes.
All right, there's a second to that. Second by Councilmember Banks McLoughlin. Discussion. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes, or to complete the list of those who I just called that are present.
I'd be glad to amend my motion, Mr. Mayor, to accommodate those that are present, if Ms. Banks McLoughlin would agree.
All right. Council, look to you for your votes on that. All right, who are we missing? Who are we missing? Dina? All right, most cares. All right. Madam Clerk, next speaker, I think.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker, did we have Mr. Sin Cedric Barham? Nope? Okay. Then our next speaker will be Mr. Benjamin Holquist.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ben Holquist from Shongtowns Fayetteville, and I'm here to talk about density. There are three characteristics most people want to see in their city: quality services, low taxes, and low density. However, all three cannot exist at the same time. You can only choose two. For me, it is simple. I want water to come out of the tap when I turn on my faucet. I want sidewalks on both sides of the street with trees to shade pedestrians from the North Carolina heat, and I want buses to come frequently enough so that people don't have to memorize the schedule. And I don't want to increase the taxes or utility fees to get this. The price for this is density. I'm not talking about skyscrapers, but rather a thickening up of the city by better utilizing our vacant and poorly used land within the city limits. All throughout the city, there are vacant lots, abandoned strip malls, and half-empty parking lots. None of these are bringing in the potential property and sales tax revenue for the city and county. These are properties that already have streets, storm drains, sewers, water pipes, and electrical lines servicing them. But instead of filling these underused locations, the city is spending money on these maintenance liabilities to businesses that are expanding down West Wayford Road and other expanded areas throughout the city, businesses that are low density and low revenue per acre, lower revenue per acre than your average mom-and-pop store. Density is also a prerequisite for walkability, bikeability, and decent public transportation. Everyone of you is aware that Fayetteville is the least walkable city in America. What you might not know is that our walk score has almost nothing to do with whether our streets have sidewalks. It is almost entirely calculated by how many amenities are within walking distance. Painting lines on the side of a road in our residential subdivisions is not going to improve our walkability of our city. It doesn't help a third of the population that is either too young, too poor, too old, or too disabled to drive a car. We need to fix our zoning to eliminate parking minimums, allow for higher density in all zones, and allow for mixed use in most zones. We also need to incentivize development to fill in the city rather than growing at our edges. A couple weeks ago, density was used as an argument for approving a two-acre gas station in College Lakes. That is not density. That will barely raise the property value over the one house that is currently at that location. For two acres, we should expect up to 20 housing units or five to 10 businesses, significantly raising property values and providing more housing and employment opportunities for Fayetteville residents. Gas stations also contribute to lower density throughout the city by encouraging more driving, and thus more of the city goes to roads and parking lots, not revenue-generating houses and businesses.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Cynthia Swinson-Leaks.
Good evening, Ms. Cynthia.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. City Council, thank you for all you do, and thank you for listening to me this afternoon. I am here to just speak from the heart on ShotSpotter. I've been a, it's been negative to me from the rollout day, and that's been no secret. I live at 715 Topeka Street in Broaddale, and I am the president of the Neighborhood Watch. I just brought you my statistics. You know, these are the reports that we get as Neighborhood Watch presidents. These are the last five months, and I'm just going to call out, you can certainly take an ink pen out and mark down some lumber blocks. I'm going to be frank with you. This is a high dollar to pay for comfort. Okay? You know, I tirelessly talk to, and I live in an aging community, I understand. I tirelessly try to get my folks, when you see something, report something. You just call 911. For the last five months, we've had 12 calls. We had two in March. And on my report, it says ShotSpotter alert. On all of my reports, it says ShotSpotter alert. A couple of them say with a 911 call. But I always ask the representative who comes to our meeting, what was the outcome from that ShotSpotter alert, that 911 call? Did you catch somebody? What happened? And nothing ever is a result from that. That's just the last five months. Now, I heard the police chief say that this is a tool. Well, of course, it wasn't rolled out to us as a tool that we were going to be paying for. You know, a tool is a hammer. You know what you're going to need that for? This is a very high-dollar tool for low results. But I would, I never have a problem without a solution. My solution to you would be spend some of that money on the police officers, offer them an incentive to move in my community where you play spot-shotter, so that they can live, work, and serve in our community and come to my Neighborhood Watch on a regular basis. Spend some of that money to bring out, you know, a satellite office in my community or the various communities that you have ShotSpotter located in. It's not going to cost you much. People are flipping houses left and right in our underserved community. It shouldn't cost this city that much. You know, make it a change station where you come in and change officers. Thank you for listening to me. Those are just my thoughts, and I will stick to them.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cynthia.
Appreciate you. Yes.
I said, thank you.
Mayor.
Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Ms. Lizette Rodriguez.
Good evening, Ms. Lizette.
Hello. Y'all know my address. I didn't think I was going to speak tonight, so I'm going to be off the cuff. A couple years ago, I think 2023, 2022, we all stood up here telling y'all to vote against ShotSpotter. We pointed to data and results that we have seen in other cities from across the U.S., in red states, blue states, red cities, blue cities, and the results were the same. ShotSpotter doesn't work. And we also, in 2022, started advocating for the Office of Community Safety with the four pillars, the Office of Community Safety that has so far shifted from what was presented to you guys, what is actually working in other cities. I remember when the Mental Health Response Team and Behavioral Health Response Team was the number-one priority of the city council, and it's not here. We just got a director. That's great. That's progress. Durham, when they started their Office of Community Safety, within six months, they had boots on the ground, they had people that the citizens could call to have an alternative to calling the police so that they can get mental health clinicians to help their family members, to help their loved ones, to help themselves. And we're still here waiting. But what we do see is late-night basketball games that the kids who are going, who are most prone to potentially being involved in violent crimes, those kids aren't going to the late-night basketball with 30 police cars in the parking lot. The kids that are going to those events have parents that care, have parents that want to see their children not fall into those same patterns, but the kids that don't have those parents, that don't have that stability, they are not there. My husband is a public school teacher. He teaches at Lewis Chapel. I hear it all the time about how uninvolved these parents are, how my own husband has had to drop kids off after orchestra practice because their parents don't pick them up. Our community needs help. They need resources. They need gun violence interruption programs that have efficacy, that have studies behind them. They are out there. I have presented, Fayetteville Freedom for All has presented that information and that data from other cities. Like in Oakland, California, their gun violence interruption program was associated with a 70% decrease in gun violence. There are programs that work, but y'all want to throw money at nonprofits without support, without the community knowing about the work that they're doing? Throwing money at a nonprofit is not going to do anything. Y'all have the opportunity to create jobs.
Thank you, Ms. Lizette.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Sean McMillan.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Sean McMillan from District Eight. Please take note that I'm requesting at the outset.
Take your tag off. Why are you speaking? Just why are you speaking?
Yeah.
Can you reset my clock? Because he's here as a public servant.
No problem.
Yeah.
No problem. Can you reset the clock for me, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Sean McMillan from District Eight. Please take note that I'm requesting at the outset of this that when I conclude, the mayor direct the appropriate staff to follow up with me to address the concerns that I raised tonight. Government accountability is not optional. It is a duty to the people you serve. And today, I stand to ask firstly, where is Fayetteville's plan for true independent oversight? When our community first embraced the Office of Community Safety, we were clear about the fact that independent oversight was to be a foundational pillar. Yet, when the council rolled out the announcement and approved the OCS, that pillar was quietly removed. So I ask you plainly, when will independent oversight return, and how will it be integrated into this agency's planning? I want to express pride and solidarity with the powerful and brilliant residents who have come forward to demand the cancellation of ShotSpotter. This is what community looks like. We also need transparency and open space for community input on whether, on ShotSpotter cancellation. In the past, residents have condemned this council for wasting money and endangering lives with this failed surveillance tool. Will you listen and bring community into the decision, or will you repeat mistakes of the past? Next, we need accountability that could come through the implementation of the Sentinel Event Review. The time is now to adopt it. Let the tragic deaths of Lawrence Artese, DeMarcus Brody, Jada Johnson, and Jason Walker be among the first incidents reviewed. To delay the implementation will be taken as denial. Remember that Citizen Review Board was delayed 11 years ago. Our community will not accept kicking the can again. And finally, fairness and accountability regarding District Eight annexation. For two decades, many residents have paid city taxes without full city services. Where is the timeline for redress? Will the city move to automatically waive connection fees for anyone still not connected? Anything less is a betrayal of the trust our residents have placed in you. The truth is simple. Accountability delayed is justice denied. Transparency postponed is democracy denied. Fayetteville cannot afford more delays, more empty promises, more "trust us" politics. Mayor, council, the people are watching. Will you stand with us for oversight, for justice, for fairness, or will you continue down the same path of silence, secrecy, and delay? The time for half-measures has passed. The time for excuses has passed. The time- The time for accountability is now. All of us are known.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Chilico Hurst.
Mr. Hurst, good evening.
Good evening, good evening, good evening, city council and fellow citizens. And of course, I'm somewhat in agreement with the past seven, eight speakers, but I'm gonna take a different path, if I may. Recently, the city of Durham passed an ordinance to protect its Latino population from ICE. This is what I'm asking this city to do. All-American city? Show me that you're the all-American city. Because this city, this country cannot survive with, without the input of my Latino brothers and sisters. Get it in your head, I don't care what you do. These people are working. Durham did it. Fayetteville stepped forward, had some courage. I know some of you got military experience. Sometimes it's not good to follow an order that you feel like in your heart is morally wrong. Sometimes our law is morally wrong. It used to be a law, we had to sit out, black my hand on the back of the bus. What happened? I still have a problem with them putting all the money in redoing whatever you're doing to where my paper was, my people were sold at the slave market house. I don't call it a market house, it's a slave market house, but we got citizens sleeping on the street. Stand up, go against the grain sometimes, listen to these citizens, and please pass the orders to protect my Latino brothers and sisters when they come here just to work. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, Madam clerk.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Reed Corbett.
I think I called his name earlier.
Did he not stand up? Okay.
Yeah.
We're done.
All right, thank you and thank you for your patience. Thank you, council, for getting us through that. Thank you to all the speakers. With that, council, we'll move to the consent agenda. I'll go to...
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion.
I got Councilmember Green who was...
Oh, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. I'd like to move 8.82 to 8.OB2 to have a separate up-and-down vote. And I would like to also move 8.0A5 to 8.0B5, also for discussion, for an up-and-down vote.
Okay, all right.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I would just ask if perhaps she would consider adding 8.04A as well?
To make that 8.04B?
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, as long as that 8.04A is, 8.0A4 is included in that.
All right, so, let me just recap. So, it's a motion to approve consent by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Benevente with the following conditions. 8.0A2 is now moved to 8.0B2. 8.0A4 is now moved to 8.0B4. And 8.0A5 is now moved to 8.0B5.
Correct.
All right. All right, any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Thompson, you had a discussion?
Seconded that motion, sir.
Oh, it was seconded, okay. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, motion carries. All right, now, as we move to the items that have been shifted, it will start with 8.0B2 and I think there's a motion for recusal. Is that council...
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that Councilmember Hondros be recused from the vote due to a conflict with, he represents one of the parties in that action.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Green to recuse Councilmember Hondros from 8.0B2, seconded by Davis. All right, any discussion on the motion of recusal? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, who are we missing besides Councilmember Hondros?
Oh, sorry.
All right, motion carries, 90. All right, and now that he's recused, I'll go back to you, Councilmember Green, for this, this is your item you pulled? Just need a motion to approve it or not?
Okay, that's what I want to make sure you want me to do next. I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 8.0A...
B.
B, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. 8.0B2.
There you go.
The conditional rezoning of the 19.2 acres located at Morg, on Morgantown Road.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Davis for approval of 8.0B2. Any discussion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, motion carries, unanimous. Moving to the next item was 8.0B4, formerly 8.0A4. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just had a couple of questions for Chief Bryan and the city manager.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, good evening.
Chief, thanks so much for being available for this item. You were upstairs in the St. Evold Room for several of the presentations made by the Wilson Center, and then obviously, we're here for the work session where we, they were presented again, the same evaluators on the efficacy of ShotSpotter. Their evaluation showed that over 75% of the ShotSpotter-only alerts were never confirmed as gunfire. Is that a number that you dispute?
Sir, the, the technology that ShotSpotter has shows it's a 97% accuracy rate regarding verifying that it is gunfire. That is, that is the, the number.
So, how would you dispute what the evaluators came to the conclusion on when it came to ShotSpotter-only alerts?
So, as I stated before, we are mixing the information in terms of the accuracy of the sensors versus when we recover evidence or if there is some type of incident or arrest that is associated with that. And so that is the number where we're talking about that 24% accuracy or that 24% in results. And as I stated on multiple occasions, the results are not instantaneously when we get there. Some results may come a year later, some results may come three days later. It is a process, it is a tool that we use with every other tools that we have in the police department.
So, the evaluation mentioned that if there was no corresponding evidence of property damage, victims or perpetrators, shells, that without any evidence to confirm gunfire, that every other city that has done an evaluation does not call it gunfire without evidence. Why do we automatically assume that there's gunfire if, I think I heard Chief Joyce at one point say that they were able to confirm that it was in fact someone working with power tools outside at one point? So, that would be at least one example of it turning out not to be gunfire that you were able to confirm with affirmative evidence. So, knowing that that is possible, why is it that we automatically assume that without evidence indeed gunfire occurred 97% of the time?
Because it's the data that's coming from the sensors. It's been, and, and that's what I want to make sure that we are clear. We're talking about the sensors, we're not talking about the results. So, as long as, as we continue to go down the path about the 24% being the accuracy of the sound that we hear, I hear that sound, I listen to that sound. When we have it on our, our phones, we hear the shots, okay? I would bet that some of these other citizens also hear these shots, okay? But all I can speak about is what we are experiencing here in Fayetteville. And I want to be able to ensure that our officers are aware what they're getting into and when we have a ShotSpotter, the technology with a 911 call that gives us the ability to approach an, a location or scene with the understanding that there's a possible gunfire that took place in that area.
And the evaluators mentioned that instances of gun violence have been going down, generally speaking, since 2022 across the entire city. But that when we look at the past 18 months of the ShotSpotter zone, there has been no decline. I guess, do you dispute that fact?
No, I don't.
Okay. And then city manager Hewitt, the evaluators made certain recommendations about some of the missing data that other cities have provided them so they could better assess the efficacy of this program. Having heard from the evaluators what to start calculating to improve our understanding of this program, is that something that we can confirm that is an interest of the police department or the city manager's office?
It is definitely my interest and I think that's all has to Chief to speak on it as well.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, so, some of the data that they were requesting is data that we don't provide, but we will be able to provide more data in terms of when we have these recovery of, of shell casings or the arrests, that is the data that you'll be able to actually see how or whether or not the value of the ShotSpotter is able to produce when we have an investigation.
Right now, you're budgeted a certain amount of money from the city council to spend on some sort of AI-type technology or just general technology. I know that as of right now, you said previously that you do not have an alternative and that that's why you're fine with ShotSpotter in the interim period. But is there potential that if you come to find some other means or method, perhaps in conjunction with the Office of Community Safety, that you might recommend to us a better use of these funds?
Well, what I would say in terms of, I will use whatever funds that the city council provides us to utilize. Currently, at this time, we're utilizing this particular tool because we find it valuable in terms of when we run our investigations. There's other technologies that city council has also provided us and approved $1.6 million that we will be moving forward to incorporate other safety measures and security measures within the city that we will also aligning with everything else that they were doing. So we, it's a continuous process and as other technologies come about, we're going to petition for the utilized, utilization of that particular technology as well. So, but at this particular point and juncture, we're, we're utilizing this tool in order to conduct our investigations.
I guess, Chief Bryan, it sounded like you're saying that you're assuming that no matter what you ask for, that the city council will pay for it. I'm asking if you, all you have is what you're budgeted presently, that you may have a better use of this money, is that something that you would present to us if it's better than, bring you better results than ShotSpotter does?
If, if there's something else in terms of a technology base that can provide us leads to get these bad actors off the street, yes, I will definitely look at any other option that would allow us to do that.
And last question, Mr. Mayor. And Chief Bryan, do you have any negative concerns, any cons? If there was a pros and cons list, is there a single con that you have about this ShotSpotter technology?
The con is that...
If any.
I, I would say that it's now political, that's what the con is.
So, I'm talking about what the technology and the way it's implemented, sir. I'm not talking about your personal political perception of it, I'm talking about the actual implementation.
Sir, when, when I'm talking about the implementation, it is strictly, it is strictly in terms of what we can do with the technology. And that technology, right now, in terms of, of what we can do with it, we can, we can make a case when there was no case based on whether we're able to locate shell casings, whether we're able to connect that shell casings to another case that maybe have been previously. So, for me, at this point in this juncture, I believe that it is something that is essential and that we can continue to use.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Chief, good job, we appreciate you and, and Director Jones, be on standby. So, Chief, there's a, there's a portal that the city has that any citizen can use to go to the latest data point on ShotSpotter, right?
That's correct.
And so that link is on, online and according to the latest data that was on the link as of a few minutes ago, it was 4,005 shots fired, okay? It was 1,000 shell casings recovered. It's 45 arrests, 19 victims, and 27 guns off the street. As a law enforcement officer, that's gotta be a plus to, to you, help you do your job, right? I mean, 1,000 shell casings, so you have other cases that you can, can work based on those type of evidence, right?
Yes, any, any...
Excuse me, excuse me.
Any lead that we can utilize in terms of an investigation is helpful.
Okay, and so, 27 guns, and so you, you know, you give us a quarterly report that talks about number of guns that we captured, we know that that is a big problem, illegal guns on our, on our city streets. And 27 guns off the street, I'm, I'm sure some were some very dangerous weapons in, in some places that, that probably shouldn't have been, so to me, that's an additive. So you're saying it's not a one-off fix-all, but certainly having 27 less guns on the street has to be a positive, right?
That is correct, sir, yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Jones. So, how you doing, sir? Mr. Jones, give, give your title and your name. I know you, but...
Good evening, council, good evening, mayor, good evening, city clerk, city attorney, city manager Hewitt, and the citizens behind me, John Jones, Director of the Office of Community Safety.
So, your department's come up a lot. And for some reason, right? You, you two look like you work together, work well together, right?
Yes, sir, I would say so.
So, so it's not a, I'm gonna give him something that I take from you or I give you something that I take from him.
Yes, sir.
You both compliment one another, right?
Yes, sir.
So I got an email from you that just gave me a recap on this year's budget, just this year.
Yes, sir.
That your office's budget is 2.3 million, roughly.
Yes, sir. We received additional $100,000 for the micro grant, so it's 2.4.
All right, and so included in your office are gun violence mitigation...
Yes, sir.
Youth programs and, and all of those community things we've heard about tonight.
Yes, sir.
And right now, about 860,000 has been set aside for youth-focused initiatives.
Yes, sir. We have made an internal budget, city manager, we have made an internal budget, and in that internal budget, 1.69 million has been allocated for contracts and services, which initially was programming, et cetera. And then from that, we have made an internal budget of how to break down that 1.69, 66, excuse me, into our four, four pillars, so youth programming, behavioral health, community violence intervention, as well as our unhoused community. And of that, right now, we haven't locked in initiatives, but 860,000 right now is allocated for the youth programming with the potential of moving that around if other initiatives arise, we put those dollars to.
Gotcha, and that's, and that's just for this year, right?
That's just for this fiscal cycle, '25, '26.
Right. But I, I guess where I'm going with that is...
Yes, sir.
What you do...
Yes, sir.
Is important.
Yes, sir.
And what you do is important.
Yes, sir.
And I think there shouldn't be an attempt to, for us to say that because we, you have 860,000, that we need to take 100,000 and give it to you. Or we shouldn't take the 200,000 for a tool that you have and give it to Mr. Jones, right? You gotta do both and. And I think, excuse me, sir, I got the floor, I got the floor. And so, what we do know is something is working, right? We can't say whether yours is more important than his or his is more important than yours, but you did agree, Chief Bryan, just to, just to make sure I recall and it was stated in, in the previous report, that gun violence in our community is on a decline, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, you know, I, I think, council, as we, as we do this and as we look at it, thank you, Mr. Jones, thank you, Chief. Uh, that's all the questions I have. It may be some follow-ups, but-
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say that both of your work, uh, are critical. And, and I can't say whether your success, you, what you're doing causes the success or what you're doing causes success, but something has caused the success, so. Uh, thank you, sir. All right. Councilmember Benevente.
Yeah, one quick follow-up for Chief Brian. How many times did a ShotSpotter-only alert without a corresponding 911 call result in the recovery of a weapon?
I can't tell you that number right offhand, sir. I don't-
I think the data showed it was nothing. And that's why when the mayor tries to manipulate the data and say that all these things happened, there was a corresponding 911 call with many of the successes, which is why the citizens have said it, at best, at best, this is a redundant system. Because people are encouraged, just like Ms. Leek said, to call 911. That, that gives them the information that they need. Can you tell me, do you, Chief Brian, do you have any concerns that when someone calls 911 and gives additional details, they give details about where they might have saw someone running from, direction-wise, may have given some information about the clothing that they were wearing, that that detail from the dispatcher going to the officer is good information for the officer to have?
It's great information, sir.
And so when the ShotSpotter folks, or excuse me, when the evaluators say that without that 911 call accompanying it, that the officers are getting there sooner than they would with a 911 call dispatch, did they not also mention that the reason they were getting there sooner was because they were not having that conversation with dispatch?
The, the information is that the officers were responding sooner with the, uh, additional of the 911 information, because between the ShotSpotter and the 911 call, they can kind of correlate, because they may have some information regarding the subject in terms of what the, a description of a subject. So it just gives that additional information for the officer when they respond.
But when there is no 911 call and they are only getting the alert from the noise detector, that they get there sooner and that the reason they get there sooner is because they're not having a conversation with dispatch?
Hmm, I don't know. I, I believe they're getting there sooner because they, they know, at least the technology is giving them some information that it is a confirmed gunshot.
That's fine. I, I can read from the report at that point.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Councilmember Green.
Chief, thank you for your comments. Um, I just want to make a couple of comments here. When we sat down with the budget, ShotSpotter came up because I asked for it to come up because I was concerned about how we're gonna play, pay for it. I have not been a huge proponent for it from the very beginning. I think most everybody, I've made everybody aware of that. Personally, I have not. My district, however, for the majority, has expressed to me they are in favor. Now, I do have those who are not. So it's been a very, um, uneven walk for me. And I've done a lot of work behind the scenes to kind of reconcile. The one thing I said was, we have no ARPA funds, which we don't. So we put in the budget, as I stated Monday in the meeting, um, so that the new chief, because you weren't here at the time, could make those decisions. Since public safety is our number one priority, I think we're all looking to you to kind of be the answer. Whether that's correct or not correct, we, we do look for you because that's the position you're in. I will also say that I heard every single comment. I, I make notes. When I'm up here, I'm listening, not on my phone, I'm listening and I'm making notes. So the thing that I want to say is I've heard over and over and over two major concerns, that we make it so what we are accumulating in data, that it matches the way we can read it. Upstairs, we, we heard it, Councilmember, the member Benevente said it very clearly upstairs, that we just want to make sure that the data that is out, the outcome of that data, we are able to interpret that data correctly. So that is my biggest concern. I heard that as a concern amongst most of the speakers. I also heard concerns about the Office of Community Safety, which I have been a proponent for since I came on council. And I am concerned that we don't have the independent oversight pillar there. And I am concerned that we, it did not come out, rolled out looking exactly like we thought it would look, for me personally. I am willing to, you are new, Mr. Jones is new, I'm willing to walk that path because public safety is our number one priority. I'm willing to give that time. So in saying that, I'm gonna support the motion tonight to, if the motion is to, um, continue ShotSpotter, I'm gonna support it for one more year. And I'm gonna trust in that year, we're gonna have better data on the other end and that the Office of Community Safety will look at mental health and the pillar for independent oversight and all the things that we thought it was gonna have coming out. So I just want to say that in this public environment, because that is part of transparency, I also heard. And I heard every single thing said. So I appreciate you and I know it hasn't been a pleasant start to your job, but I think you're still the right person for the job. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. And, and Chief, last thing I'll say, because I had some manipulation of my words there by my colleague. But, uh, it, the report also said that your response times were faster. Can you speak on that a little bit?
Yes. In, in terms of whenever there's, i- i- the, the report shows and the study shows that, uh, the officer response is definitely, uh, much quicker in terms of when they have a call, uh, that's associated with ShotSpotter and even more so with ShotSpotter and a 911 call.
Gotcha. All right. All right, council, I'll look to you, uh-
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move that we, uh, renew ShotSpotter on a month-to-month basis at this point. And I would just ask for a, uh, opportunity to discuss the reasons why, um, especially as it relates to fiscal responsibility and some additional data we're gonna get from the, um, additional study on the cost of gun violence that's supposed to be due to us next month.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Benevente, is there a second to that? All right. Motion dies from lack of a second. Uh, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have motioned that we approve item 8.0B4.
Second, sir.
As mentioned in the consent.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Thompson.
Have some discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Hare, discussion on the motion.
Yes.
Councilmember Benevente.
You first, if you have anything, sir.
Yeah, just wanted to, um, the, this additional data and information that's been requested that we talked about during the work session that has been brought up tonight. Whenever that information, uh, comes in, whenever it is, I don't know if you're gonna try to, that'd be something that would be added on the next quarter of the presentation or if that comes in the end of the year, then, uh, next year, we still, as a council, would have an opportunity to do, uh, and I'm, guess I'm sort of saying this to council, but to you two, to do any type of changes or updates or whatever the case may be upon receiving that information, correct? I mean, th- that's our, uh, authority to do so.
I believe so. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Go to Councilmember Benevente, then Mayor Protim, and then Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's very interesting that, um, the people who are elected to think deeply about this issue, this ShotSpotter issue, um, really, we haven't given it half as much thought as some of the citizens that came and spoke today. I was prepared to say a lot about this, but, um, I wish I could just, you know, take the words, um, you know, from Ms. Angela, from Mr. Isaac, uh, from Kristen and Elijah, because I think they really did, um, the research on this, that they actually, uh, looked at some of the data that we received objectively, um, and have come to the conclusion that ShotSpotter is not a positive investment, um, for the citizens in these three areas, that at the end of the day, um, the folks who live there, um, if there is an investment of $220,000 in ensuring they have secure housing, uh, ensuring that they have secure childcare, and ensuring they have secure jobs, that you will see a much greater reduction in gun violence in those communities than anywhere else. The chief of police already said it himself, he does not dispute that over the course of 18 months, ShotSpotter has not, uh, in those three zones, gun violence has not been reduced at all, statistically speaking. And if we're gonna spend another $220,000 on a product that we claim in the contract has, uh, got a 97% efficacy rate when independent evaluators who have, um, no skin in the game, that are pure academics, who have reviewed this and said that in fact, only 24% of the time can you find any evidence of actual gunfire, um, the thing about basic rules of evidence, especially law enforcement who has to make claims and satisfy their claims with actual evidence, um, we don't get to assume without evidence that something is true. You have to build a case and you have to present evidence. So it's surprising to me that right now, we're saying without evidence, we're assuming 100% of the time that a loud noise is in fact gunfire, when we've already heard from other, um, folks in the police department, that they can tell you times when they've gone out and it's not been gunfire. So, you know, when I turn on the TV and I see people like RFK ignoring, um, you know, experts and scientists, and I know that everyone in this community will turn on the TV and be like shocked by, uh, the moving of the goalposts and, 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 and sort of the pure ignorance on display, um, that kind of lack of trust and independent expertise is alive and well here in Fayetteville City Council all the same. And I'm looking forward to the day that the people stand up and demand more from their council members, um, that we look at independent evaluations like this and take it seriously, rather than trying to fit, uh, into what seems to be like their political views into a particular outcome. If any other product that the city put money towards only worked 24% of the time, if a dump truck only lifted trash 24 times out of the 100 times it was promised to pick up trash on a given month, we would have massive questions. It's only when it comes to issues of law enforcement that we kind of throw out all good sense about what works and what doesn't. And I'm looking forward to the day that there's justice for Lawrence artists in this community, because one thing that my colleagues refuse to talk about is that the first day that we turned on this product, an interaction with law enforcement resulted in the loss of life of someone here in this community. And until we address that, there will always be massive concerns and judgment of any of the council members that vote to support this for even another day longer.
Thank you. All right. Mayor Protim Jensen.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I know that we have, um, gone back and forth and talked about this for quite a while. And, um, I was just gonna say that, um, as we sit up here and we put people in charge and that we talk about the police and the fire department and everybody that's out there on the front lines, I appreciate you being candor with us and telling us what, what you feel that you need. And I will always support the police. I've done that from day one. But with that, what I wanted to say is I did want to call for the question, but I know that Councilmember, um, Banks-McLaughlin was thinking, so I'll pull back on that.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
All right. I'll circle back to you. All right. Councilmember, uh, Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, chief, uh, for answering all the questions. I do want to say to the community, um, those who've came out and expressed their concerns, thank you, uh, for just coming out to show your support and expressing your concerns. However, I've had conversations with the chief, um, and one thing, you know, as an elected official, you know, we know that you're, um, new on board, but, um, this is something that you do on a regular. You've been doing this for years. You mentioned as far as with the technology, it's helpful, it's an additional tool. We talked about, uh, before as far as incorporating drones to help, um, solve some of these crimes. And as mentioned also, this is not to stop gun violence. This is just simply a tool to be able to, um, provide or show evidence for our community. Um, I think when we talking about, uh, violence in our community, I think as a council, I can speak for myself, we're doing any and everything that we can do to protect our community. So that should be first and foremost, because that is a priority. And another thing with the ShotSpotters, we have our military using similar technology. So if it's great enough for our military to use it, it is also great enough for our community, um, to use this very technology. So I just wanted to just mention that and just wanted to say that I am very supportive of this initiative, um, and I do support it taking place for another year. And, um, I look forward to, you know, your, your continuous work. So I'll just leave it at that and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. As we, uh, bring this to a close, uh, the question that was just called, I, I wanted to support just the statements that my colleague just stated. Chief Brian is a professional. Our new director for OCS is a professional. Where, he was doing this job, I think, in Chicago before coming to us and-
Jones.
Jones. John Jones. And here it is to hear, chief, so, cause I'm applauding you, to hear, uh, someone say or a colleague to even insinuate about evidence or not getting the professional data or statist- statistics. And you are our professional, even though you may just be coming on the job within the last few months. You were professional before then. I have to stand by the guidance that you and the other men and women, the weather white and the blue for the city of Fayetteville, I have to stand by what you think is best and what could help, uh, even if it helps a, a little or whatever the, the, uh, percentage may be. I was just thinking the, the other day, um, I see the K-9 dogs in the back of the vehicles, and I've worked with K-9. And if a K-9 goes to a particular area, if you're trying to do a job with him or her, the, it's the dog, if they don't get a hit or able to help right that, at that particular moment, you don't take that K-9 or shut down the, the K-9 system. You stop using the K-9 system. And I've seen them sometimes get, get a hit and not get a hit. So I stand, I'm gonna stand with you, I'm gonna stand with our director, I'm gonna stand, continue to stand with our police department and support this item, uh, for, uh, one additional year. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hare. And, um, as we prepare, uh, go to Mayor Protim Jensen to call the question, I do, I do want to correct a couple of misstatements, okay? Because we can't say things and they go unchallenged and they become non-facts. The sentence that my colleague read, he stopped reading it. The evidence that there is no significant decrease in crime in the areas, the remaining sentence says that it's inconsistent with the overall decrease of gun violence in the whole city. So meaning that, that the entire city's amount of gun violence reduced-
So it doesn't matter that ShotSpotter was there.
Excuse me, sir. I got the floor, I got the floor. And so what it's saying is that, uh, there was no evidence that necessarily said that these areas, specific areas, had even more reductions than the other reductions. That's a good problem to have, to see who's better of the best of reductions, right? Because we understand that, that, that what happens is generated about people, not territory, right? And so, uh, I do, just wanted to read the rest of the sentence. You can interpret it, the report's available online, and the 24% has been thrown around tonight. I think you hit it a little bit. It was not about whether the technology detected a gunshot, which is what it's for. It said 24% of the time after the gunshot alert was sent, that actual evidence was recovered. This is not a evidence collecting equipment, it is for alerting, like your alarm at the home. Your alarm is not there to catch burglars, it goes off to let you know that someone has tripped the alarm. And so I just wanted to put those few things out there, because we threw out a lot of numbers and percentages, but the report is available online, you can get it, you can read the entire components of it. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I call for the question.
All right, council, look to you for your votes.
Point of inquiry, don't we have to have a vote on that motion of a two-thirds?
You don't. We talked about-
So, um, if I may, Mayor Colvin, um, just a regular motion at this time would be proper?
Well, the motion's already existing. He's already, Hare made the motion, I mean, Thompson made the motion, Hare seconded the motion.
Okay.
That was the discussion phase.
Okay. So then, um, the, the call for the question does require, after the first round of debate, it does require seven of the 10 to approve that after it's been seconded?
Okay. So even when we go on two rounds of discussion?
It requires a second and then it requires a two-thirds vote, which would be seven of the 10.
Mr. Mayor, you could also just ask her to withdraw that and just-
Mr. Mayor, you could also just ask her to withdraw that and just vote. You don't have to call the question.
Yeah, we've gone two rounds, so you can...
It's withdrawn.
All right. So council, I'll look to you for your votes. Who are we missing? All right. Motion carries eight-two. It was voted in opposition, council member Hondros.
And Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a second motion now that was, you know, accepted as reasonable by, I think, city staff and city chief of police, that we accept those data-based recommendations, just the data-based recommendations to improve our ability to understand the efficacy of this program.
So, Mr. Manager, unless we're going to read those data points, but I think you, there was some consensus that providing additional data to be calculated into the report, as mentioned upstairs, can you speak to that a bit and get a consensus nod from us so that we're not debating it?
I think the chief and I are of one mind that anything that we can do to add additional detail to our register we're keeping in line with the recommendations we would do on the database component.
All right.
Without the report in front of me, sir, that's what I recall.
Is there a second?
There's a second. A second.
All right.
And just a brief discussion, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you reading the full quote from the report. The reason that that is so relevant is because 98% of the city does not have Shot Spotter. It is only in a very small section of the city, and all these many areas of Shot Spotter saw reductions in gun violence, whereas the ones that supposedly have this incredibly magical technology did not have any improvements. This is why we say at best it's redundant, and at worst, it creates an abridgement of people's Fourth Amendment rights. Because the one piece of data that I've requested from our city attorney that has not been presented is how many people were in the wrong place at the wrong time in a Shot Spotter zone with no gun, with no weapon. Some of those folks are dealing with mental health crisis, some of those folks are dealing with addiction issues, some of those folks are dealing with abject poverty, and they were stopped, searched, and arrested for things that had nothing to do with firearms. So when our chief of police and other people on this dais say that there are zero cons to this program, I think people's abridgement of their Fourth Amendment rights is a massive con. The city of Fayetteville is not doling out equal justice in this city. If you are in the wrong place at the wrong time because the loud noise maker said a loud noise occurred, that is a con to this program. Lawrence Artists losing his life is a con to this program. I know that's a little bit out of the realm of the motions, and I apologize, you can gavel me down.
Well, I just readily respect the rules. All right, so this is your motion, that was the discussion, let's vote. The motion made by council member Benevente to ask the city manager to review and take any additional data that can be added as referred, as recommended in the report. Is everybody tracking that? All right, council, look to you for your votes for that. All right, motion carries nine-one. All right, moving to the approval of the appointment committee, go to council member here, chairman.
Mayor, we still have 8.05 that you had pulled.
8.05, lost in there. All right, 8.05B, that's council member Green's item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like I've talked about 10 times more than I normally do during a meeting, so bear with me. This was on the consent agenda, and it was to approve the fire station number 16 construction manager at risk selection. I have no issue with that. What I would like to hear, I asked several questions upstairs, one being, how was the selection process done? I'd like for you to walk us through that. And just kind of an overall, what does this look like moving forward? Because one of the things that this council and previous council have been criticized over is our lack of transparency and not paying attention as we should to construction projects. So if you would just please walk us through this process.
Yes, ma'am, we'd be happy to. My name's Adam Lindsay, I'm assistant city manager, and to my right is Mr. Jonathan Best, and he is actually with Bar &amp; Bar Horus, which is the contract that is on your agenda tonight for us to negotiate and approve. And we'll tag team the answers as we need to. But just referring council back to June, council authorized city staff to look into alternative delivery methods as part of the ongoing response to your interest, to really sophisticate the construction management delivery in the city. And one of those methods at that time that you recommended was actually the recommendation from our architect and from the owner's advisor. So this council has asked that we use owner's advisors, that we use Freezing Nichols, an outside engineering firm, to help guide all of our major construction projects. And traditionally, what you see in a construction project is a design, bid, build, approach. So you hire a designer through a qualifications process, you find somebody who's qualified, they design the project, and then that goes out to bid, and you want to receive up to a minimum of three but more bids that are qualified, and you select the lowest qualified bid in that process. What the C-MAR approach is, is it helps, actually, one of the issues that we've had is getting qualified bidders. And so by the same process almost that you use for an architect, where you put out a request for qualifications, and then you pick the best firm to do that design with their experience and their resources and availability, that's similar to what a C-MAR does, is before the design is all the way through, so we're just approaching 30% design, you actually put out a request for qualifications to receive qualified general contractors that can come in and help finalize that design, and then as that finalization gets very close, they will give us a guaranteed maximum price for the project. One of the huge advantages of that is that in not just picking that low bid, you actually get to pick someone who's very qualified, so you get to ask questions and sort of vet them a lot more. And to our advantage, and this was the recommendation back in June, we thought we're likely to get more qualified bids that way, and that's exactly what happened. We had four teams submit, very qualified, we interviewed three of those teams, and ultimately we're bringing to you tonight Bar &amp; Bar Horus. The process for that part of it was this, using our owner's advisor, again, an outside firm that's advising us on the project, obviously the architect was involved, and then using Freezing Nichols, all members of the team that complemented staff in the selection process. And tonight, if you have questions of Mr. Best or his team, but they have a lot of experience in delivering these type of projects, they're already locally connected here, so we're excited, and they've got a strong community outreach, which are things that we all know are very important to us as we establish trust in the community and how we deliver these projects.
Thank you. One of my major concerns, you answered immediately upstairs when I asked, was that who was on the selection team? Because it was very important to me, walking in this path almost daily, that it not be just staff members. We need outside folks looking at what we're doing. So I appreciate the process, I appreciate your being here tonight. That tells me that y'all have some buy-in at this point, and I do appreciate it. So, thank you, you've answered my concerns.
And I would just add too, that not because it's required, but they've also offered to provide performance bonds for the pre-construction process, which is not normal nor required, but they understand that this is important to us, and we appreciate them doing that.
Thank you, Adam. Council member here.
And before you gentlemen go, thank you, and thank Dr. Hewitt for opening up the door where I could ask somewhat similar questions concerning the contracts, and with Bar &amp; Bar, and again, welcome, though you say you're in favor from time to time, but, you know, welcome to Fayetteville, and thank you for what you're doing. I think that this somewhat of an OSHA check or a backup check for us on our projects is a plus. We needed it way before now. With some concerns that we've had in the past, my question is, when it comes to payment, as I stated upstairs, within your scope, you will be checking or making sure that it is checked, and then inspections take place, and that they are passed before checks are implemented to contractor or the GC or the subs, correct? Because that's a very, very big plus from the concern that we had in the past, because we don't want to go down this road again. Is that's what's also in place, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, there are several checks and balances on that process. So first and foremost is the architect is hired as a construction administrator. So all work, so of course, they're the ones who designed the work, and they have to sign off on work completed, and that's when payment happens. But in this case, we also have an owner's advisor who's on the team who will also review that, in addition to Freezing Nichols, which handles our project management. So we have multiple layers to verify that work is completed before those payments are done. Of course, we have excellent staff as well that are going to be checking behind that.
Yes. Thank you, and I'm just proud of council that we finally, you know, got this here part together, and Mayor, I move to approve whenever the motion is made.
I think it was council member Green's, but it was second. I do have a question.
I wasn't making a motion, I was just saying I'm supporting my colleague.
All right, council member Thompson.
Jerry's next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a question, ACM Adams, I just want to thank you guys for putting in the measures that we need to make sure our CIPs get done, completed, get done on time, and get done on budget. So Mr. Best from Bar &amp; Bar, we appreciate you being here, we like the Freezing Nichols that we have also oversighting these projects, just keep up the great work, and let's make sure that we do this all the time when we have these major CIP projects. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council member Green.
Yes, sir, thank you. I move that we make a motion that we move to approve 8.0B5 by authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract for pre-construction activities with Bar &amp; Bar Horus, construction not to exceed $400,000.
All right, there's a motion by council member Green, seconded by council member here, oh, Davis, he's got his butt. All right, discussion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, motion carries by those voting unanimous. All right, moving to the next item. Council member here, chairman of appointments committee. Big one? Huh? None. Yeah, we passed consent, yeah. Try to prolong, maybe. All right, council member here.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and I heard you say that you don't want to prolong. I hope we don't with, you know, I got a, I have about 80 names to say over here. My name is DJ Here, I am your committee chair for your appointments committee. Before I move forward, I just want to thank our council members that served with me on that board, council member Thompson and Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, and a visitor that's there all the time that he's trying to become a part of the committee, that's council member Adino Hondros. Before I move forward, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, because the questions very well may come up tonight. If for some reason that you hear a name more than one time, applicant's name more than one time on a board, it would, it's because there may be one committee that rarely meets. And so our policy gives us an opportunity to have an applicant serve on more than one board. So if you hear a name more than one time, that's due to the infrequency of the meeting of a particular committee. Let us move forward. Our airport committee nominates Paul Henson, animal control committee, Keith Bates Jr., audit committee, Cindy Graham, board of appeals committee, Sandy Pickert, CPA B. Committee, Austin Kenlaw, Charles Jones, Harry Burnett Bennett, and William Bells and William Wesley, our economic development board, Catherine Cox. Additional nominations, our fair housing board is Elizabeth Saratou, our Fayetteville Next Commission, Andrew Ridgway, Ashley Wyatt, Diamond Spain, Joseph Quinn V., Sretta Fleming, our historical or historic resources commission, Brian Vesely, Cynthia Leaks, human relations commission, Antoinette Morris, Eric Bradley, Dashika Upchurch, Tara Van Gens, William Milton II, our joint appearance commission, Kenan Jackson, and William Wesley. Nominations for our parks and rec advisory board, Brenda Gordon, Maria Covington, Nanice Metta, y'all just roll with me, y'all just roll with me, okay? And Roderick Gooden Jr., personnel review board, Charlotte Fisk, Jennifer Rodella, Michelle Dean, and Scott Klein, our planning commission, Kevin Reed, and Raymond Macar, our public arts commission, Dominique Ashley, Sabrina Stinglman, our redevelopment commission, Catherine Smalls, and Kishanda Williams, and Tyler Patton. Nominations for our senior advisory, our senior citizens advisory commission, Dorothy Taman, Jacqueline Washington, and Kimberly Baptiste, stormwater advisory board, Dominique Caitlin, Patricia Archie Jackson, Sandy Parker, our woodpeckers capital reserve, Charles Jones, Gregory Fox, Renish Hammond, and Sarah Bandurica, just stay right with me, everyone. And our zoning commission, Kim Medley, Philip Filer, Toyaia Moans, and Zacharys Ely.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion by...
For the record, Mr. Chairman, I do serve on appointment, it's policy committee I visit all the time, but I second that motion.
All right, motion by council member here, recommendations as mentioned, seconded by council member Hondros, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Thank you, council, I made it through.
All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous by those voting. Motion carries, so congratulations to the new appointees. All right, council, I'll look to you for, council, I want consideration to move item, the administrative report item 10.01 to the next work session.
So moved.
All right, there's a motion by, a couple of motions by council member here and council member Green, any discussion? All right, look to you for your votes to move that. All right, who we miss? All right, all right, thank you. All right, motion adjourned? All right, good night.